So, okay, so let me just make sure I understand. We don't advertise, so how are the public supposed to know unless they have a relationship already existing with us or with the superintendent or members of this board who've been on this board for a long time? I think the process needs to, we may need to look at that. I certainly like to postpone the item to have an understanding of these folks' background and be able to properly understand it. I think it's been made pretty clear by way of being on this board that I'm a little bit different in a lot of ways. I don't do things just because they've been done before a certain way, just because it hasn't been advertised before. I don't believe that makes it right. I don't think that's transparent. I don't think that provides equal opportunity to everyone who's interested. And frankly, I view it as an embarrassment for this district to follow a process like that. And if we can postpone the item so that we can better understand, at least get a biography of these folks or their qualifications and see what kind of fiscal background they have or what they've produced in the community or in their prospective roles, it would certainly be eye-opening and I may actually go for it and improve it. It's just I can't go based on faith and just three names on this, there's just no description. So is it possible to postpone this item so that we can get more information on the background of these folks and have a better understanding of their qualifications?
Unfortunately, it is not. The terms expire as of June 30th and we have to have folks in place for July 1st so that we stay in accordance with the Prop 39 guidelines. So, you know, not knowing that this was going to be a concern, we haven't changed our process. We haven't been asked in the past to change the process. It's something that, you know, we could potentially do moving forward, but at this time, we need to have the board put somebody in place so that we have members effective on July 1st of 2016. I will say that each of them are required to complete Form 700s, just like the Board of Trustees is. They are required to sign a conflict of interest policy, so none of the representatives can have any interest in the college or work for any vendor that we are going to do business with.
Well, I certainly appreciate that. I don't understand why this item didn't come before us earlier. It seems like it's designed for us to rubber stamp and I take great exception to that. I certainly am unable to prove it as it is. I'm not going to go based on faith. As much as I trust staff and your judgment, I verify and I don't believe this process is defensible. I don't believe it's transparent. I don't believe it's right. The public deserve to know about this ahead of time and be able to compete for it rather than getting calls or based on past service on the board. What kind of measures do we have as far as the performance of these oversight committee members? Are they held to a certain account or performance measures that they have to produce? Or is it just, you know, sitting there and I don't even really understand what their, if they do have any objectives or goals as far as looking at cost overruns? I've asked many times for on-time, on-budget report that I've been told it comes through the Citizens Oversight Committee, but I've never seen it to date. So I will be voting no on this and simply, again, nothing against the people who are being presented. Again, I don't know them, so if you're in the crowd, I don't think you're in the crowd. I don't know all of them. Please don't take it personally. I take, it concerns me to a great degree to follow this kind of process where we're rubber stamping and I cannot in good conscience vote yes on it.
Okay. Well, I think it's a little disingenuous to say you don't know anything about these people. I think the board member that sits now ran against you and you had a complete campaign against her, so maybe you didn't learn anything about her during that time, but you did know who she was. I don't personally know of or have ever heard of Eric Berg before, but, pardon, sorry. Well, but I, I know of Randy Gordon. I don't, I'm not a friend of his, but he's the president of the Chamber of Commerce, has been for 25, 30 years, and maybe not quite that long here in Long Beach. I, I have it on good faith that he represents businesses, so I don't have any problem with that. And I agree with you that this could be a better process, but given our constraints, I'm going to support the motion. And if you'd like, I'd be happy to sit down with you and try and work out a better process going forward, but I don't, I, they, Anne-Marie, help me out. I think that the, what the Citizens Oversight Committee does is make sure that what, that the way that we're making decisions is consonant with Prop 39, with, with all of us.
Yes. The main charge of the Citizens Oversight Committee is to ensure that all the expenditures that are made are in accordance with the project lists that were approved by the voters.
So if I may, first of all, I don't question your motives, my fellow trustees, President Otto, for you to say it's disingenuous, it's questioning my motive. I have no, nothing against anyone on this, including my opponent that you and the old board members so enthusiastically put up here. You know, I think you've made it political and, you know, I don't frankly care. I would certainly like to see if Ms. Kaiser was given the opportunity to apply or perhaps Mr. Bolisovsky or Mr. Slaughter. I highly doubt that, but I'm questioning the process here. I do not know the qualifications of Ms. Ursula. I didn't run against her. I ran for making this district better and more representative of communities' perspective. So let's get that straight. You know, this is the second time that this recommendation has come before us and I think it's bad form. I've expressed this to you and the rest of the board members and I will not go along to get along just because they're your friends. So with that, I think let's just let this to rest and why don't we invite everyone's opponents to have a seat at the table? Why don't we talk about that if we're really going to go there? But again, it's not about that, you know? It's about the process. We need to be transparent. We need to look at these folks' qualifications. Again, I don't know these folks. What are their background, their experience, including the person that you mentioned who ran against me? She certainly was, you know, had the same opportunity, but thank God for the Long Beach voters and thank God for democracy and that's why I'm sitting here after two years. So I don't think there's any dispute about that, but we, I'm happy to work with you certainly on the process, but please don't make this political. I won't give you the satisfaction of, it doesn't upset me. I'm questioning the process for the integrity of this district and that's all I'm asking for and that's why I won't vote for it. I don't think it's an unreasonable request and I don't think it's impolite to ask to postpone this to see backgrounds and biography. I don't think it's, it's certainly reasonable within our right to know and make well-informed decisions.
I mean, I, what I said was, it was disingenuous for you to say that you don't know these people when somebody, one of them. The way we make decisions in life is not by personally knowing everybody. What we're doing is trying to make a decision here about, plus I'm happy to work with anybody about this process here, but I think we need to move forward. What I've been told by Ms. Gable is that we have to have a seven-member board and that the, the, the current appointments end on the 30th or on the 1st of July. Is that correct?
The current appointments expire on June 30th of 2016 and so these appointments will take effect July 1st, 2016.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Otto, may I say something? I was surprised when this came on the agenda and I do know all three individuals and they certainly represent the communities well, but I also have a problem because I have kind of made a list in my head of people that I wanted to suggest for the Oversight Committee based on their participation. And I think that we should have been told a month ago, these appointments are coming up. If somebody has a suggestion, please, you know, and that's number one. And number two, I think there should be an application that somebody completes. I'm voting yes tonight because, to expedite this, but I do think that it could be cleaner and I, I represent the city of Lakewood as well as Long Beach. I'd like to see representation from the city of Lakewood. Is there currently someone?
Yes, currently we have Mr. David C., who is actually with-
Lives in Lakewood Village. I went to his home for the bond.
Well, yes, he lives in the Lakewood Village Neighborhoods Association.
Okay, but that's not the city of Lakewood. So that, that's my contention that we need to be, perhaps broaden our representation, but I'm going to vote yes.
And we did reach out to a business owner in Lakewood who refused.
Okay. Maybe ask me next time.
Yeah, no, I'm, points have all been well taken. I think we can, to see if people have interest in the fact, as this meeting has been about process procedures and things we do and how we can improve and do all the same thing. And I, but at the same time, I mean, I don't, I know of people, but these I don't know extremely well or some I don't know well at all, but at the same time, I mean, I don't want anyone to ever think of the votes are because of any other reasons except these are the people that came to the process. They were presented and I just make this point of, and so just to not make anyone feel they're all by themselves, but I believe the, within a week or two after I was sworn into this seat, the person I defeated, the former incumbent, was appointed to the Personnel Commission and I voted for him and he did a fine job. So it's, those things, and the reason for that is there was a process and he was appointed by a certain group and Darwin did a fine job for many, many years. So that's, again, it's part of the process and I think we can possibly look at maybe having some type of forum in the future. And it's unfortunate the woman that did ask this question, and I'm only saying this because too many times when people bring up items during the public comment, we are not really, I don't want to say supposed to, but we're not required, but it's the time for people to make the comments, but that person brought up some points that we're now addressing here on those categories, those reasons, how they do, the responsibilities of the citizen oversight that I've always been a little bit concerned, but that's the way we do our meetings where people do make comments and they, they walk out of here with not really a response unless they sit through the meeting and in this case, we finally get to it. But there are reasons on why and how we do things and obviously anytime you can try to improve that process and with the application process outreach a little more aggressive, that's fine, but I'm very comfortable with the motion here tonight as well. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have another comment. There's a comment made about they act in accordance with the audit and they review that. Let's, let us just make one thing clear. The audits that we do, serving on the audit committee, is to make sure the bond money is spent within the Prop 39 guidelines and it's really to spend it on bond money and construction-related aspect. It doesn't look at cost overrun. It doesn't look at schedule delays. Those are the particular concerns of mine that I think we need to look at in candidates. And I want to ask, you know, that we really look at that in, from a perspective of making our district better and not handpicking certain committee members because of relationships and just going only, outreach only to certain people. I think it should be an open process. We should let everyone have an opportunity to compete for it and be, not be put in a position of having to vote for this and, you know, being held a little bit hostage, like if you don't vote, we're not going to be in compliance. I, it greatly concerns me when I am put in a position where I'm forced to vote a certain way and I know I'm one board member and my vote is my voice, so again, nothing against these folks. I am not going to vote based on faith and somebody's name on there. During a campaign, it's four months, six months endeavor, you don't really get to know someone because unless you run a negative campaign, which I did not, and I don't, I don't have anything against Ms. Ursula. I just haven't seen what she's been able to produce. I've, I don't, I don't see her at any kind of building openings or any board meetings and, you know, the committee meetings that I've gone to, I don't, I don't see any specific reports from any of the individual committee members. Perhaps each and every one of them can come here and present a report to us so we can get better acquainted with them. Again, with that, I'm going to vote no on this item.
Can we just call for the question?
Question's been called. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Nay.
Passes three to one.
Four to one.
I'm sorry, four to one. The, we're on to the consent agenda. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately if a member of the Board of Trustees so requests. Are there any requests to remove items from the consent agenda? And then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Archuleta, seconded by trustee Zia. Roll call vote.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Moving on to academic senate items, it's first 6.1 Modified Courses. It's a quick report.
The Senate is bringing several items before the board tonight and again, everything we're bringing forward has gone through the curriculum process, the process that's been talked about quite a bit this evening and reflect hundreds of hours of work on behalf of faculty.
Entertain a motion to approve 6.1.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Baxter, seconded by trustee Zia. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Oops.
Absent.
Absent. Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay. Carries four to nothing. 6.2 New Modified and Inactivated Courses. Anything to add to what's in our report?
So the difference between this item to the previous one, these are effective fall 217 and the previous item is fall 216.
Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Zia, seconded by trustee Baxter. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
He's coming.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yay.
He said yes.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. On to 6.3, this is Addition to General Education Plans.
Everybody understands our Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, different levels of transfer or local degree and we are adding or suggesting that we add these to the various areas on those plans.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Archuleta, seconded by-
Second.
By trustee Baxter. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Carries unanimously 6.4 New Certificates and Degrees.
So earlier tonight, we had the questions of Certificate of Accomplishment and Achievement, so you can see those reflected on here in the different areas as well as they're an AS Degree in Business Information Professional as well as AST, which are also the ADTs, Transfer to the Cal State system.
Okay. Any discussion? Excuse me, we don't have a motion yet. Motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Archuleta, seconded by trustee Kellogg. All right. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. What does PHP stand for? PHP Web Programmer, the Certificate of Accomplishment? Anybody? Nobody?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you know what? I'm hitting a blank on that, but I can, I can let you know, but it's some form of web programming and I just am not recalling it at the moment.
Okay, and is it beyond the acronym? Is it, can you remind me, Certificate of Accomplishment is less than how many?
Less than 18.
Less than 18, so how many is this in particular?
I, do you remember that? Okay, we think it's 16.
Okay, and is, was it based on the industry need, just that there is a need for the web programmers?
Yes, as talked about earlier this evening, we're really not developing anything that doesn't articulate or there doesn't seem to be some sort of workforce demand.
Okay, great, thank you.
Further questions? Roll call vote, please.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. We are on to Human Resources, 7.1, the 2016, 2017. This is indefinite salary rates for, for district employees. It's an action item. It's recommended that in anticipation of any potential financial uncertainties, negotiations, legislation, or other factors, that the governing board hereby declare that all salary rates be declared indefinite for fiscal year 2016-17 for academic employees represented by CCA and CHI, classified employees represented by AFT and the management team employees and other unrepresented employees as submitted. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Kellogg. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Archuleta. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Carries unanimously 7.2 Approval of Revised Board Policy 3001 Equal Employment Opportunity. It's recommended that the Board of Trustees approve the Revised Board Policy 3001 Equal Employment Opportunity as submitted. We're, moved by trustee-
Second.
Kellogg, seconded by trustee Baxter. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Carries unanimously 7.3, the CCA Salary Schedule for 2015, 2016. This is an action item. It's recommended that the Board of Trustees approve the 2015, 2016 Salary Schedule as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Baxter.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Archuleta. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. So does this include the off-schedule bonuses in the 2015, 2016 Salary Schedule and was it discussed at the tentative agreement stage?
Yes, it does include that. I'll let Anne-Marie talk about the tentative agreement stage because she was the one that was involved in negotiations, but it does include the 2.5 off-schedule. Anne-Marie?
So in the tentative agreement, it provides for the ongoing salary schedule as well as the one-time bonus that is off-schedule. This statement is being presented under the advisement of the Los Angeles County Office of Education in order to show what the, what faculty were going to be paid in 15, 16 in its entirety and then what the salary is as of July 1st of 2016. So that's why you see the next item, 7.4.
Other questions? Vote.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Okay. 7.4, the CCA Salary Schedule for 2016-17. It's an action item. It's recommended the Board of Trustees approve salary schedules 1 and 1A for 2016-17 as submitted. It's moved by trustee Archuleta. Second, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by trustee Baxter. Any questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
7.5, this is the Management Team Salary Increase and Longevity Steps for 2016-2017. Is there a motion?
President Otto, I would like to, I don't know how you, if you bifurcate the motion and I would like to suggest that we approve only the first part and not the second part. And so I move to give a 0.80% increase recommended to the management team salary mirrors as salary increase provided to AFT beginning July 1st.
So you're not making a motion with regard to the longevity step?
That is correct.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Zia? Okay. Discussion?
I'd like to explain why I propose this. This longevity step, this is something that's gone on for a long time. It's been a lot of, I just don't think that there's been enough study on the part of the board and I don't feel comfortable in voting for that section. However, I do feel comfortable in voting for the 0.80% increase for the management team.
Any other discussion or comments?
So quiet, I'm sorry. So are we giving some type of a timeline when this will return?
Well, what I was hoping is maybe we could discuss this in closed session at the July meeting.
I don't know if you can do closed session on, I don't know.
Can you not do that?
Actually, what I would recommend is that after this motion is taken, I mean, and voted on, that we move to continue the next, the other part of this, to the next meeting or two minutes or so.
All right, and for the sake of time tonight and I'll, I'll support the motion, I just thought these were items like others that have been dealt with internally for quite a period of time, so, and by the time it gets to us, it's been flushed out fairly well, but if there's some questions, then I'll support the motion at this time. It appears the majority of the board wants to have more discussion on the longevity issue. So I'll be supportive of the, I said substitute motion. I don't know if that's, but that's probably what it is.
Well, actually, it's just a motion.
That's true. There's no original motion on the floor. That's fine.
There is a motion. Other questions or comments?
I just wanted to agree and echo both your point and trustee Baxter's point and I'm glad we're bifurcating this mainly because of procedural and process. We do this with all our salary negotiations and I certainly like to get more information, so I would support that.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm just, the question, I'm throwing it out probably because of the hour, but this district, like some other districts, is an issue called stabilization, which means our funding for, is no longer what it has been in the past and yet we've given a lot of increases here tonight, so I'm just, I'm throwing that out for all you budgetary people that love this stuff. It's, when we're in a stabilization, stabilization, it's, it just means that. We're not, we're not getting growth and things of that nature. So anyway, I look forward to the comments in the future on this item.
Okay. Any other comments?
I, just if I may, one last comment and that is, there's no question about the merits, it was just subject to verification and I don't think we've had, it's not a matter of stabilization or not, it's a matter of understanding the particulars, just like other salary negotiations and discussions and that's pretty much why I'm supportive of trustee Baxter's position.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Well, I, I know that this has been discussed for a long time, but I've never really heard a definitive answer on what merit-based pay is and I guess that's where I was coming from on this part, is I'd like to hear how they're going to base somebody's pay based on merit.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote.
So we-
Any other comments or questions?
I, I know that this has been discussed for a long time, but I've never really heard a definitive answer on what merit-based pay is and I guess that's where I was coming from on this part, is I'd like to hear how they're going to base somebody's pay based on merit.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote.
So we are, the Board of Trustees approved the 0.80% Management Team Salary Increase only for ranges 17 to 24.
No, 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 no.
No, as negotiated in the legislature.
This is a, this is a, this is a recommended, the motion is to approve the recommended 0.8% Management Team Salary Increase.
Yes.
Period.
Period. Specifying the ranges.
No.
Okay.
No.
Oh, that, yes, that belongs to the other portion.
Yes, yes, that's something else. Roll call vote, please.
Just erased my motion. Okay, Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Is there another motion?
Okay, hold on, I
Sorry.
I can change that one.
Okay.
Okay, so.